Good to go?
Yep.
All in order, I do appreciate everybody's patience. We were a little behind schedule this evening. We did have an executive session prior to our regular meeting to discuss personnel litigation issues. Prayer, Councilman Patterson?
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace, God, as we make decisions that will affect our borough and the residents. God, we ask that you continue to bless our police officers, firefighters, and all our branches of military. Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
(inaudible)
Mark Rokol.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Thaddeus Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here. Prior to the public forum, I just want to make an announcement that Eddystone Borough is mourning the sudden loss of a lifelong resident of our town, as well as a former member of our Borough Council. In Danielle's words, "No words, only tears" can describe this loss.
Hi, I just wanted to speak about houses that have been left unattended in Eddystone.
Can I grab your address real quick?
748 Ashland Avenue. We actually have a home on my street. It's been vacant almost two years now because it's been listed as uninhabitable. It has roof and water damage that is now seeping through to adjoining homes, causing damage. We wanted to see if there's something we can do about having either the homeowner or somebody come out and fix this problem because it's now affecting adjoining homes. And, of course, the property is 746 Ashland, which has caused water damage into our neighbor's home who's here with me at 744 Ashland Avenue now. And it's been left as is from the day they moved out. Nothing's been touched, nothing's been cleaned out of there, nothing's been just closed up and left for almost two years now. And we're also suffering some extra bug infestation along with mice due to the fact that no one's in there and everything's left. That's about it.
Councilman Patterson, can you give us a quick update on...
Okay, what we did is, we will be able to help with the situation. We will close the property in the next 48 hours. We signed a contract with a company called A2U, and they will be able to take care of every detail, sit down and speak with them about other issues. They'll be able to take care of that for you.
That's all we're looking for, because like I said, it's starting to cause damage now to the adjoining homes that are on those sides of it.
Give it a couple of weeks because they'll have a seven-day notice.
Okay.
As soon as we get that out there, maybe we'll take care of it. Any other issues, just give us a call.
Mr. Carlo, we do have a representative we asked this evening from A2U. When we get to the new business portion, I'm going to yield a few minutes so that he can give an explanation, kind of an overview of what his company's services are.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm glad to see that the podium was self-explanatory, was something new that we've brought in. You know, it's just a quick change. What I hope to be an improvement to the public forum is that if you want to address Borough Council, we just ask that you come to the podium, state your name, state your address. There's an opportunity for you to put your name on the board at the time that you do arrive. If the discussion that is occurring prompts you to want to speak, there is a second opportunity that we're going to provide. So at this time, I'll ask, is there anybody else in attendance that would like to address Borough Council?
Can I ask Mr. Wilson a question?
Yes.
You're not afraid of a podium, are you?
I am afraid of podiums.[323.12][323.12](Laughter) I didn't want to make an issue of it, but... Actually, I simply wanted to put that up to make sure that you reported what the executive session was about, and you did that very well in accordance with the law, and I appreciate that. And so there was no need for me to say anything.
Steve Blaine, you're keeping us on our toes. You're pushing me down.
You're doing great.
With no other folks looking for public forum, Mr. Pacente, Treasury's report?
Mr. President, the month ending December 31st, 2013, the balance at the beginning of that month, December 1st, was 367,939 dollars. Then in excess of expenditures over revenues amount of $107,205. We had payroll expenditures, $90,809. The balance of the general fund, December 31st, 2013, was $169,925.
Counsel, you've heard the Treasury's report. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to report, Treasury's report is read by Mr. Pacente and make it part of permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Cash receipts and disbursements journal?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll make a motion that cash receipts and disbursements journals, all bills be paid and all money's deposited.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes from the special meeting, both the CDVG as well as the budget meeting held on the 30th of December, 2013. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion to approve both those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of special meetings for the CDVG on 12:30 and the budget on 12:30 as well. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Code enforcement report, Mr. Pacente.
Mr. President, the month ending December, 27 inspections were performed, three violation stop orders or citations were issued, 35 work permits were issued, and 13 licenses were issued. The code enforcement department took fees in the month of December, 2013, in the amount of $260,408.26.
Counsel, you've heard the code enforcement report for the month ending December 31st, 2013. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the code enforcement report for the month of December.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Borough Council's in receipt of a letter from David A. Bennett, Sr., who is the Scout Master for the Boy Scout Troop Number 52. Council has supported the Boy Scout Troop in the past, and Scout Master Bennett is looking for Council to provide some financial support in the amount of $400. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to support the Boy Scouts of America by providing them with a $400 donation under our civic association.
Motion made in second, it all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Tim, if you can get a check made out to the Boy Scouts, that would be much appreciated.
Do we go to the Boy Scouts or does it go to the...
United Methodist Church.
United Methodist Church?
Yeah.
Eddystone, right?
Okay, thanks.
It specified in the letter.
New business, the public forum procedures. We've introduced the podium. The scheduling for a Civil Service Commission meeting with the discharge of William Connor as Chief of Police for the Borough of Eddystone. He has sent correspondence requesting that we schedule a Civil Service Commission meeting. They hear his claim, and we've tentatively scheduled that meeting for the 29th of January 2014 at 7:00 p.m. here in Borough Chambers. Once I do get confirmation from the legal councils involved, we'll send out a public notice announcing officially that date, but that's what we're looking at at current. It's Wednesday, the 29th of January at 7:00 p.m. here in Borough Council Chamber for a meeting of the Civil Service Commission.
You're not saying, are you saying that's an open meeting?
That is an open meeting, yes.
Okay.
I will notify the members. Review of the vacancies in the citizens committees. Tim, if you can provide me after this meeting, a list of all of the citizens committees that we have, I would like to review that, look at what vacancies we do have, and we'll give some specifics to everybody at next meeting for where we're looking for positions to be filled. Update on recycling. Recycling in Eddystone began on Tuesday, the 7th of January, 2014. Over the weekend, I'd like to thank Debbie Patterson as well as Claire Wilson for volunteering to distribute door-to-door a public notice which kind of gave the residential guide to single bin recycling. We also reached out to Re-Community to have them put together some posters, and I hope everybody saw the poster at the door as you came in. There's two posters that they've provided, and we can actually, if you wanted to pass them around. We'll have posters at Borough Hall. Asked Mayor Reeves to post the firehouse. Will ask Danielle to post lighthouse hall, and also make sure that we've got some posters going down to the elementary school. Considering that Tuesday, the 7th of January, was the coldest day in history, I was personally pleased that we had 24 residents that had their can curbside. And when you run the numbers, the engineer and me coming out, that's a 3% participation, which it was good to see curbside, but I do think that now that we've got the public notice out and that the weather next Tuesday is going to be a lot better, we're going to see a significant increase. Stickers are available. What we do ask, and this was the instructions that was in the flyer, is that you designate a can for nothing but recyclable materials, that that can has a lid to protect the materials from the elements, and that that can has a clear marking that says recyclable. Stickers are here at Borough Hall. If you would prefer to just take a black Sharpie marker and write across the can recyclable, that's more than acceptable as well. But we do encourage everybody's participation just because not only is it the right thing to do for the environment, but it's an easy way to save taxpayer dollars. Anything else on recycling?
No, I'm sorry.
One action that we failed to take at last meeting, which was the reorganization meeting, was the reappointment of our part-time patrol officers for the Borough of Eddystone Police Department. And I will just read the names as one list and then seek a motion for the reappointment of Officer Burns, Officer Golden, Officer Gleam, Officer McCarthy, Officer Holmes, and Officer Bazani to be reappointed as part-time police officers for the Borough of Eddystone. Counsel, I need a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Carlo, as mentioned earlier, we were pleased to have in attendance this evening Mr. James, Jimmy Cleaver. Mr. Cleaver owns a A2U Services, and we've entered into a professional services agreement with A2U. A2U specializes in addressing concerns specifically what you've brought up this evening. So if I could yield a few minutes to Mr. Cleaver, he can address Council, kind of give an overview of his business.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Cleaver from A2U Services. We do abatements, we do a lot of municipal work. Abatements over the past couple of years have become crazy in all these towns, as you well know, with vacant properties going from a homeowner in no man's land back to a bank in six months to a year. The borough's responsible for maintaining it, or the borough's got to take the responsibility to maintain it just to keep the borough clean. We've offered that service. We do it from Darby right on through Ridley Park, coming up the Pike. We've been doing it for about five years now. All your residents got to do is get ahold of someone in the Borough Hall, tell them the property's vacant, you make a list, it gets checked, there's a break-in. Biggest problem we're finding now over the past couple of weeks is all the water lines are freezing. You're getting water running out of the homes, water damaged to the neighbor on either side if they're twins or singles, or twins or row homes. Got to come in, turn the water off, secure the property, get the water out of the basement so you don't get damaged to either side. So we've been doing that service and are proud to be here in Eddystone to offer A2U to.
You take care of the rodents too and the...
Everything.
Everything.
Yep. I'll sit down with your code enforcement officer, we'll go over it. If there's a house that's been vacant, it's got food in it. For some reason, I have no idea why people just get up Friday night and walk out and don't come back, but refrigerator's got food, food in the counters, food in the closets, all track mice, rodents, and everything that way. We come in after it's abated, clean out the house, exterminate it, and move on from there. Grass cutting, we'll put it on a list.
Snow removal?
Snow removal, yep. Grass cutting.
How about for cat urine?
Cat urine, same thing. We'll come in, remove the carpets, whatever. I know you have one going on now. I'd like to see it and see what can be done in it.
Do you also do roofs?
Yes.
The roofs are leaking?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're not going to put a new roof on, we'll patch it to go from there.
But stop the problem.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Cleaver, I do have one question.
Sure.
When you do a property, like the property that is adjacent to the resident there...
Right.
When you bomb that for the insects in, with the bugs and things like that, is there any way of letting the neighbors know so that they can do the same thing at the same time?
Correct.
We don't want them moving in next door.
Yeah, you'll get 24 hours' notice.
Good. We want to contain, plus we have animals ourselves, that we don't want to have the animals around when this is taking place.
Our biggest thing is, we got to get inside it, see what the problems are, and then address the problems on that list. So if you have, per se, roaches coming over, let's get the junk out of the house first. And it may take a couple of exterminations on your end and ours to stop it.
As long as we know, we would like to contain it, not have it spread the rest of the row of homes and have them come back in a few months.
Yeah, no, much.
Go on.
Right. If you get the food out, they're not coming back because there's nothing for them to eat. And that's the biggest thing.
I'd like to also let everyone know that it's not going to be any kind of tax increase or anything like that for his services. So that's also another reason why we want A2U.
Yes, Claire?
Is some of the cost of this passed on to the owners of the property somehow?
Yes, all of it. A hundred percent of it, yep.
Yep, a hundred percent of it.
How many houses should be bombed next to this vacant?
Normally two, either side.
That's it?
Yep.
Should I bomb my house too?
Well, if you're on the opposite side of it.
No, she's on the other side of me, so she's...
I'm on the opposite side of that.
No, we should contain it. If it's a row home, we should contain it to three homes.
I will gladly, as long as I know the problem will be solved.
What happens if the homeowner retains freedom of entry into the house? Do we change the locks to prevent that from happening?
Once we gain access, it gets padlocked. The house gets padlocked, there's a sign on the front door.
We aren't even sure who owns that property at this point anymore. If it's the homeowner, the bank, foreclosure, there's been two foreclosure notices on the house already.
Right, that's the major problem. It's the banks don't take responsibility.
We don't even know who to go to because we don't know who owns the property at this point.
And the problem is, you run the tax record.
My recommendation is that you've got an issue with a vacant property or dilapidated property adjacent to you, you know, you come to Borough Hall, file a report with the code enforcement officer. Councilman Patterson chairs the zoning and code enforcement committee. He's going to work directly with our code enforcement officer. You know, we obviously, as a Borough Council, we have to provide the property owner with the, you know, time to make the corrections once we cite a violation, but once, you know, in your situation, if it's something that's been going on for years...
We're talking almost two years now.
...the nation ran out 18 months ago. So, you know, that's when we've got this service with A2U coming in. Mr. Williams?
Once the property has been legally tagged by the borough, how long do you get in there?
Once it's tagged, 72 hours, approximately.
Last Tuesday, the house next to me with the cat and worms tagged.
Okay.
I've been quite used for three years.
Okay.
It's still a mess.
I talked to them tonight before I came down. I want to make to the homeowner that owns the property to gain access because we have a homeowner. It's not like we have a bank or we have nobody.
And what are you doing when, like him, it doesn't respond?
Well, then we'll gain access.
The guy taking the court, the borough has taken him to court, he just doesn't show.
Okay, well, that's going to be up to the borough at that point. If there's no, he doesn't return, doesn't respond, then we'll gain access, it'll get padlocked, and then it's the borough's responsibility after that.
Any other questions for Mr. Cleaver?
Can you do something about that apartment building for me too? 1115, where Eddystone happened, that apartment building to burn down?
What's the address?
It's under construction.
It's under construction, isn't it, Christine?
No.
The old creep bag?
It's out of construction.
They stopped.
They stopped.
They took a lot, burnt it down, they were losing everything, put two-by-fours up around the perimeter, and they stopped.
Completely stopped.
They worked for maybe about three weeks, and that was it.
It was the last, the last we heard that they were waiting for the insurance company, something with the insurance company. Can you find out through the firehouse, Alan, Mayor?
That was painful, wasn't it?
If they got any, if they received any information on that?
Hold up.
There's another one, 1117, right next door to me too.
Shahid?
Yeah.
There you go, Sandy, your buddy.
Mr. Cleaver, thank you very much for coming this evening. Counsel, any other new business, counsel? Mr. Pacente, police report, please.
Mr. President, for December 2013, there were 358 calls for service, and since it was the last day of the year, the total for the year was 4,988. There were 82 citations issued, bringing the total for the year to 1,680. There were nine accidents, 69 for the year. There were 16 thefts, 206, which made 236 for the year. There were 22 parking citations, which made 363 for the year. And there were 29 criminal arrests. And the Eddystone Police Department made 295 criminal arrests in 2013.
Counsel, you've heard the police report for the month ending December, 2013. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the police report as read for December, 2013.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Mr. Pacente, the fire report.
Mr. President, new chief Andrew Walsh submitted a fire report with totals for the year 2013. In sum, there were 215 calls, 128 of those calls were at night and 87 were day calls. And the new chief itemized those calls on a list that's in the report capacity.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the fire report for the month of December, to make part of your permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
A question, please. I just wondered, when these things are on here, these are things that you've responded to, are these all things that happened within Eddystone, or do these also include when you respond to another municipality?
These are all dispatches out of town, in town.
So when we look at this, if it says there's been this many alarms, it's not been just in Eddystone, it's been, okay.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, I think Chief Pacheski, anything to report, right?
Yes, I got together with Chief LaSalle from the Ridley Park Police Department. So the Ridley Park Police Department, Eddystone, Ridley Township, all the departments within Ridley School District got together, and we're going to have an heroin awareness class at the middle school. I was hoping to have the date today, however, the date has not been solidified yet, and we'll be towards the end of February. I'll get that date out to the residents. We're also talking about having continued classes between the three departments, have a place where we can meet and have different topics, maybe topics for seniors, topics for teenagers, that I would get out and try to help some folks. Also, last Tuesday, we had a departmental meeting, and the department decided to try to form a police association. And what that is, is separate from the police department, but ran by the members of the police department, we're going to try to do some fundraisers, gain some money, and try to get back to the community.
Councilman Donahue?
I'm great.
Councilwoman Gross?
I'm great.
Councilman Patterson?
I'm good.
Vice President Reeves?
Yes, under buildings, I'm getting several requests about a firehouse, about rental and whatnot. I would like to sit down with either the building committee and Sandy and Bob as well to get a contract drawn up and to have Edie Delarocco from Delarocco Catering manage our firehouse for us. Look, I didn't know if that was, they were going to have some door over gunwales. I didn't know they proceeded with the new fire company. Well, here's my issue with the new firehouse. We need somebody who is familiar with the commercial kitchen to run the kitchen. Will other members be able to use it? Oh, yes, absolutely. So if we won't have an event as a member, we can use it? Yes. And it's, so we can schedule it, even knowing somebody that doesn't have an event? Right. It's all going to be scheduled. People are reaching out to Ms. Delarocco, Mrs. Delarocco. For instance, a funeral home reached out to her and asked her if they knew of a facility they could use for lunches after funerals. This could be beneficial to the borough financially. I mean, and of course, residents, that's why I wanted to talk to Sandy, because we'd like to work up a structure so that residents aren't paying as much as Jane that comes in from Ridley Park to use our facility for, you know, a baby shower. So that we're discounted. Being residents, being members of the firehouse, being members of council, we get first dibs on it, we get discounted. Plus, she'll take good care of the kitchen. And she'll take good care of the kitchen. I mean, we know the kitchen will be clean, we know that she, her food's excellent. I don't know if anybody's familiar with Delarocco's, they're on McDay Boulevard. What's that, what block is that, Sandy? You know?
700 block.
700 block of McDay Boulevard, right across from, well, two doors down from Cressman Doyle's office. It's like a little strip mall there. Her food's great. I mean, you could go in and... It's like a little strip mall there. Her, her food's great. I mean, you could go in and, her own crab soup's awesome, and and she's very, very hospitable.
She also has experience, right?
Oh, she has experience. She used to, um, manage Sharon Hill Fire Department, and, uh, she's helped out over at the Dog House. She's had a lot of years of, you know, catering experience.
I, I just, I'm not familiar with this whole concept, so I was just gonna ask a couple of questions. So, so the, the, when you, when you say that she, she would manage the catering, she doesn't have like an exclusive contract to do all the catering there, or is that what you're saying?
If it's a catered event, she would do the catering.
So she has an exclusive contract. Anyone who wants to have an event there that's catered would have to use her?
Yes. But this is just something, like I said, I have to sit down with Sandy and the building committee to get this all ironed out with her.
'Cause that, that almost, I, I, that sounds like a big step to me, 'cause I, I know everybody that shelled out a lot of taxpayer money for the fire department building, uh, doesn't wanna find that they can't use it because they can only use one caterer. I would think that, some people might think that's an issue.
And this, that's a good thing, that's why I'm bringing this up, so we can discuss this, and.
Great.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's, you'll find that other firehouses that have the halls have an exclusive caterer for the same reason. Lazaretto and, um, Chinicum, the, uh, in Boothwin, I'm not sure who caters that, but it's an exclusive caterer. It just gives you, you know.
That's, that's the way, that's the way it's typically done.
Right, right.
How does the, uh, how does, a, as an independent organization, how does the volunteer fire company figure into that?
We get, we would get, we would get the money for the rental of the hall.
Now, this is even more general. The, the building belongs to the borough, but the volunteer fire department has the use of and control of the building, basically, right? I mean.
Not the hall.
Not the hall? Okay.
The rental hall is the borough's.
Okay. Is the, is the firehouse just the part that has the engines in it, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I also believe that the catering, when we spoke about it, uh, they're insured for that kitchen with the oven and the fryers and the stove, and you have to be insured to.
Yeah, certainly, anybody who went in there should be either insured or bonded, or whatever you would do for that.
Exactly.
Great.
And that was part of our, your decision, but I'm glad I opened it up, so that, does anybody else have any feelings or thoughts on it?
So let's say you'll be working over the next two months to secure some type of written agreement.
I'd like to do it within the next month.
Within the next month? Okay.
I have people that are interested in, that are coming to me and asking me if they could use this hall. Kathy, you needed it for what, first birthday, March, right?
Um, March 31st.
March 31st. Somebody else had wanted it for christening, Ed.
For February.
February, right, see?
Graduations.
Grad, yeah, we got graduation parties coming up, you know?
Vice President Reeves, anything else?
Uh, no, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Tetcher. Ms. Thompson?
No, I don't have any.
Mayor Reeves?
Uh, yes, uh, let everybody know that if anybody needs anything or any, uh, help with anything, they give me a holler, one door, and we'll be done.
I'll volunteer for prayer next month, if you need a volunteer.
Well, I guess, we're gonna do a reset, I just wanted to, uh, ask how you wanted to maybe right the left.
Well, you said it tonight, I'll say it tomorrow night, or the next, next month, rather, not tomorrow night, but next month, and then that way you have four people that have already been on council that know.
Okay.
And then you can get, then you two will, you know what I'm saying, you'll see how, how the prayer is done now. You gotta write up your own prayer.
And leave it under your blotter.
Leave it on your blotter.
In case one doesn't show up one night.
So that every sister, yeah. Does that make sense? I mean, that, it's fine with me. You could say Dave started tonight and just follow suit.
Gentlemen's peace.
I'm fine, I'll get, I'll do prayer, I can do prayer.
The reverend.
I, I thought Dave had been appointed chaplain. I thought you had been appointed chaplain, 'cause you did at the last meeting.
I love working this, I love working this, Danny's such a trooper.
I will end with just a recycling tip, and, you know, I'm excited that we've got the flyer out. I think everybody has a clear understanding of what the recycling program is all about, what is acceptable materials, what is unacceptable materials. So, uh, with the water bottle up here this evening, the water bottle is recyclable. So when I'm finished, I'm gonna go to the back kitchen, I'm gonna drop it into the recycling bin. However, the cap is not, they just asked us to throw the cap away. So my recycling tip for this evening is, the bottle is good, the cap goes in the garbage. Motion to adjourn.